I'd like to ask Ashton Ballard to give the indication, please.
Well, God, we thank you for allowing us to be here and fellowship up to do the deeds that the city needs done. Uh, we know that you want to have a plan and have faith in that plan and follow you, whatever that may mean. Bless us as we go from here to the rest of the week, you know, right there.
First, item. On the work session agenda is discussion from David Andrews with Center for Municipal Solutions, recommending approval of special use permit for AT&amp;T to install co-located existing telecommunications towers located at five ninety-six Railroad to provide wireless services essentially within the corporate limits and police jurisdictions of the city of Solocaca.
Good afternoon, Council Mayor. David Andrews with CMS. This resolution is a co-location application by AT&amp;T. Uh, we haven't, the, the city has an existing tower there at five ninety-six Railroad. And, uh, AT&amp;T is not providing service in this area and they're requesting to co-locate on that tower. Uh, it's a two hundred fifty foot self-support tower and they're wanting to place their antennas at two hundred and thirty-five foot. And this will create a, a new point for AT&amp;T to provide service. So it should greatly increase the service along the two thirty-one corridor and around high crest elementary school and south of the, uh, south of the airport in that area. Uh, CMS has reviewed the application and recommends approval by the council.
Mike, do you have anything to add on that? You got any questions? Well, thank you for your time and come into discuss with us.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's take discussion on the FY twenty twenty-three Alabama annual report. Would it must be adopted no later than the first meeting in January of twenty twenty-four?
We got notified, um, that we need to do a report for FY twenty-three rebuild Alabama. We got with some of the other city clerks, um, as we've not done this before. And I sent out the Excel spreadsheet. We were provided a little less than a hundred thousand dollars for Marble City Height Circle. And we spent ninety-one thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars in voids. So we spent ninety-one percent of the funding that we brought to these projects.
We still got some funds left.
The project's complete, sir.
We don't have any funds left.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well.
Any additional questions concerning that?
What, what did those funds go forward to?
Is that what we think that role is?
There's a half mile of.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
Your line, that's correct.
All right, next item on the agenda is update on the TA eighteen and TA nineteen project.
That's again being well. Um, we have to have everything to AL doc before Christmas. Um, with the mayor's help, we were able to get the newspaper certification, um, which we should have had, um, but we did get it. We turned it into AL doc. That project's not estimated to be completed until March twenty-four, closed out.
Why is that?
With all the delays with the city, E D T, Triple J, and getting all the finalized documentation.
But the boots on the ground still isn't complete?
Yes, yep.
Alex, how, what's the latest on the TA twenty-three project? When, when are we going to start that?
We really don't know yet because we haven't closed up eighteen, nineteen.
So we're waiting, still waiting on?
Eighteen, in AL doc. Um, we did on November second submit a letter for an extension for the TA twenty-three project, which we were advised today has still not been approved. One. AL doc, I'm not sure.
Okay.
The mayor and I are going to call them tomorrow.
So who's going to call E D T to see where we are with getting everything cooked? Because I thought we done discussed this several months ago.
We did. Um, we sent an email on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-three with no response. We sent an email yesterday, got a response today that Mr. Randy is ill and she will get back with us when she's not sick. So that's the reason we're going to call AL doc. Because we're in jeopardy of missing twenty-three.
Could we get her at our next work session?
I don't, I don't.
A little.
I don't think it has, it shouldn't matter who it is as long as we get in contact with AL doc, all right? We just need a representative.
Yeah, we just need to be representing.
Make it right.
Yeah, so I think.
We didn't call AL doc.
Yeah, so I think you guys calling tomorrow will be fine. It doesn't matter as long as somebody can, um.
I would like to.
Yeah, okay.
Get a couple of that.
The mayor and I have time to call him tomorrow.
Great.
Anybody else?
No, you're fine. I, I think that's, we, we need to just figure it directly from there.
Um, we have an add-on, which is discussion from Police Chief Kelly Johnson. That is necessary to approve zero eleven while retail liquor class two package application from Narav P Patel, co-owner of Kishab Swami LLC, Danish Steve Patel, member of Kishab Swami LLC, and Mahendra Steve Patel, member of Kishab Swami LLC, located at three hundred West Wilt Liam Street in Solocaca.
How can we keep them running?
That, that's the old automatic gas. Okay. You ready to get any questions?
Those same, those same people have another license for, for service stations. He's older with the Sunoco and the Goodwater Highway.
I'm just making, making sure addition three is down on the page source. Still do.
Number, item number five, another add item discussion that is necessary to authorize Mayor Hackel to sign agreement and release in reference to settlement of case C V twenty twenty-three nine zero zero one six dot zero zero zero. Anybody got any questions or more? Alex, do you have any?
Lynn, do you have anything on this one?
I don't. I've sent an email, but I guess you all will read the emails. And if you have any questions about the settlement and what we're doing, I'll be happy to answer them.
I'm good.
I'm good. I think you explained it really well.
Great, thank you.
And discussion from Human Resource Specialist Jane Mcgee to sell unused vacation leave.
Yes, I had to work, uh, last week. I've come in twice and had some calls that come and I had to take care of it.
So.
Three hours civil service board meeting and Friday I came in to do an unemployment claim and it been reopened and so.
Mayor, did you authorize any of that?
I just found out about it when you did.
You saw me.
Did I sign it?
You saw me there.
Like, any additional discussions or question on that?
I didn't know it was going to be on the agenda. I have seen it.
Had, was, is anyone else affected like this, Jane? Because I'm, I'm having a hard time.
Not that I'm aware of. I was, I think I probably don't. It's the type of job I have. I have to help everybody when they need it and I have deadlines, so. Believe me, I would rather affect the timeline.
So you was making the deadline as wanting to come in or?
Yeah, the unemployment point. I didn't want us to lose and have to pay unemployment to someone who been terminated.
I have a question. Laura?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, if.
So two hours, you originally asked for twenty-four and then you asked for two more hours because you knew you were going to attend a civil service board meeting. Is that included in the new number or was that included in the old number?
An extra hour was included in the day number.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. It was a three-hour meeting because we had ten people to interview the day after the holidays.
Any additional questions?
Uh, I think Laura, Jane, it just, since it's on you, are we anywhere, uh, near starting on that job description?
No.
You doing your job description?
No, this is my voice line. We got W two's, A C A, we still have U K G. We're still talking about finances. I mean, it's on, it's on there, but I mean, I'm, I'm just my person.
Okay.
Just curious, what's the latest on the comp time policy? I know we talked about that several months ago.
Oh, season's secondary right now. I've got to get the W two's and all the separate stuff out. I'm sorry, I just can't live here.
And I know that y'all have got one, uh, policy currently being advertised, um, with employees and then they'll get their feedback and it.
Is that the comp time policy?
No, it's not.
Which policy is that?
The policy y'all asked for.
Well, we asked for the comp time policy also. I'm just a little confused here.
The E C T.
You give me some more help and I'll get you, I'll get you all the policies you want.
I don't, I don't think that's necessary.
Our next item, the, uh, new business is action that is necessary to authorize agreement with J M C M Consulting to prepare a grant application for FEMA's Assistant to Firefighters Grants towards the purchase of a new fire engine, a five percent grant writing fee, and a five percent local match is required only if grant is awarded. Nate Osgood was unable to be here too.
Is this what we signed that MOU for?
Yes.
Fire truck?
Yeah. So now the time to.
This was discussed on the last, um, work session.
I know, I remember that a while ago we signed an MOU and we didn't have.
You have more sales in line.
Right.
So now is the time.
Now he's got, he was denied their grant last year, so now he needs your permission to rewrite the plan.
Okay.
Um, and that was discussed at the last council meeting, so it was just supposed to be voted on. It's not.
No cost unless it's awarded. So if it's awarded, where does the money come from?
It's going to come from the buyer's performance, but.
Action that is necessary to approve FY twenty-three accounts payable invoices. Item number fourteen is action that is necessary to approve FY twenty-four account payable invoices. Item number fifteen is action that is necessary to approve December payroll in the amount of four hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. And that, and all these items.
I got a question. Jane's don't feel like we're picking on her.
I'm used to it and I don't take it personally.
Well, this is, um, I know we approved the, um, pay plan and we talked about the list of education that was supposed to go with the, you know, because it was going to be implemented the first pay period in January. So is that a priority? Is that on the table or?
Yes.
So, so will we have that at the next meeting just so we can see it? Because, and the only reason I'm asking is, you know, for us to implement this new pay.
That's a priority cause right now, yes, sir.
I got one more thing, um, Jane as well. The, the incentive E C T that's been advertised, I just want to make sure, because we passed one thing, I want to make sure it's correct. It's been advertised. Um, you tell me which way this is. If city's paying for the training, are these incentives still going towards whatever they need to bump up in pay? And get that in front of the state plan? Or in order to get incentive pay?
Can you answer your question? We're still going through that ten-day process. We're trying to get everybody's feedback. So I just, I, I can't really give you a whole lot yet before you're supposed to.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm saying. What's it advertised as? Is it saying that the city's paying for the classes and you get the incentive for it paid or?
It's saying that it's at the expense of the employee.
Okay, that's what I was asking. So that, in my mind, that takes away the double dipping to where the employee pays for the class and the city pays.
And if, if I, if I could go a little further, the reason, the reason is because you've been very generous with this pay plan. You know, you're paying for folks to go to and get their certifications. Um, you're paying their salary, you're paying, you know, they have to stay in a hotel, you're paying their wages while they're gone. I mean, most employees would just really be, really be happy that you took care of the training and they could develop and move on up, so.
I'm doing both like we were.
But that one, but that one is for required, um, certifications, right? That we're paying for training, travel, and, you know, meals and lodging. That's just for required.
That was that concept, that E C T line, and we got rid of that E C T line.
And we did it with fire too. They did all their incentives because they were the main ones to have the most incentives.
Yeah, but we're not, so, but that's what I'm asking. Um, I just want to make sure, I know what you're asking, just, just tell me. So we're not doing all that for people to move up. We're only doing that for required training. You know, like say Kelly, you know, like.
Paying for it.
Yeah, we're paying for it only if it's required.
Yes.
Okay, so no meals, lodging, fuel?
Above and beyond extras to get extra incentive pay?
It's on there, okay. And Cassie, um, so what's the timeline, what's the, what's the timeline for that to be done? What, the last question I asked?
So we posted those policies out at, starting the clock yesterday. They have to have their responses in by the sixteenth. We'll take those, compile all of that, have a department head meeting on the eighteenth that morning, and then we meet with you guys that evening.
I hate, I hate to say this, I hate to be the bad guy. What's the penalty if the department heads don't have it in by deadline? Because I mean, it is required. We did implement a new pay plan and we're putting people on this pay plan based on what they're going to give us, based on what they said, so.
Now, as far as the listing, I would say ninety-nine percent have already got everything in and on the list. Um, it'll just be finalizing with the department heads.
Okay.
Okay, I have one thing. I do think that public safety should have their own E C T policy versus a whole city line.
Y'all need public.
I know, and I feel like public safety needs to be on a different policy, y'all need.
When it be neutral across the board, the pay plan is, when it be neutral across the board, I don't agree with that.
Well, it is, but it isn't because we decided, that's why the department heads are coming up with what's considered education. So it is, everybody, each department is actually going to have their own stuff technically, you know? So they, they are being treated special but different, you know, or, but the same, special but the same. Because of to.
Basically, current employees have already been grandfathered into this pay plan. We're really talking about people who haven't even been hired yet.
I know, but that's the whole point of having a list, so that way you can know what you, um, you know.
And they can, they can pay for it.
Yeah.
And just back the certification and we put them on the line.
Yeah, and the list is supposed to, and to me, the list should be motivation. So if I want to get here or I need to make this much money, here's a way I can do it. So it's like.
And Nate, Nate Osgood agreed with that. We talked about that meeting.
Yeah, we're not, we're not.
So what do you, what do you do with the options that already have the certifications and?
But they, they were paid, they were placed on the pay plan based on those certifications that they had, right? That was my understanding. Everybody.
They wasn't, no, nobody got, nobody got any kind of upgraded pay for certifications on the pay plan. Not in, not in our department.
Well, that's what our department.
So do you start, do you wipe slate clean and start from scratch?
Now, he did say that. I think we're going to have to start rolling back some minutes because Nate did say they did. Because he said that based on where they were, he, he built it in, he built it in and everybody was placed where they were supposed to be placed. And then if they had certain certifications, then instead of going down, you know, to the education line that we took away, they got a step. That's what we discussed.
I remember that. That was done, it was done the worst part.
But I know the police department, that last pay plan.
There's nothing that hasn't seen it. We've never had an incentive plan for the police department.
But that last pay plan that you guys got.
Had nothing to do with it. Because you gave them all up.
Yeah, you gave those incentives up.
Hold on, Cassie, Cassie, can you clarify something?
You were getting the pay for one.
So if I could speak to that, all of the department heads, for the most part, got us their listings and who was, who qualified. Um, we got a list of the certifications that Kelly was willing to be included, but we did not have a list of the employees to who that, that meant.
Okay, all right, so.
He, he did bring that to us this week.
Okay, but that's messed up because we were, I was under.
How they can be repositioned?
But I'm saying, I was under the impression that we had already done that. And now we passed the pay plan and we're thinking everybody got what they were supposed to get. And now we're going to be in a situation to, y'all are going to come back in two weeks and say, well, the police department didn't get what they were supposed to get. So now the pay plan that we approved is not, it's about to go up. It's not going to cost what we agreed it would cost. So I kind of feel like I felt, I felt like a fluke.
We, we operated on the information that we had.
Okay, but Kelly, why didn't, why didn't you say that at the meeting? Because we asked, we asked everybody.
The incentive was a secondary thing is what I was under the impression. Incentives were secondary, the pay plan didn't include incentives. The pay plan is.
But I understand both sides, the tip needs to be side, but what I'm, what I'm saying is that now if they have, who knows incentives apply to, they can reposition them. But I also see what you're saying is now the plan's going to be higher cost.
Okay, and, and.
So they're going to get their proper pay, but it's going to be something that we didn't vote on.
And too, they, what I was told, what I heard, I ain't going to say what I was told, what I, what I heard was that as far as the incentives, when you gave yours up, so everybody, when you gave yours up in the last one, and then we got this new pay plan, everybody was positioned where they were supposed to be based on all of their accolades and certificates and certifications that everybody had. And all we did was took away the education line. So we took away the education line, say, tell me one of your certifications. I don't know, just say one, your certification.
That I, that I put in for?
Yeah, just anybody, anybody, whatever that certification is, say.
You can say cleep.
Okay, cleep. So it was saying, if, if based on where I am, if I fell on a, say, step five, if I had cleep, then I got another step because of the cleep. That's what I, that's what I understood.
If the fire department got there.
So did that not happen?
We didn't have any information of who it was.
But why didn't y'all tell us that y'all didn't have any information?
They didn't even ask us for a list of any thing until.
He gave up his incentives. He gave up his incentives.
Okay, but so did.
Coming back to the table.
But so did the fire department. They're not really incentives. They, they started calling, to me, they reclassified it as education. Am I, is, was that your understanding? Everything got reclassified as education. And the police department is going to have their list of education. Nate's going to have his list of education. Um, the clerks, everybody's going to have their list of education. It was their responsibility to say what their education was. And when y'all built the, built the pay, pay plan, y'all were supposed to build everybody in based on what certifications they had and what, what steps they were. Y'all even went in and counted, hey, if you've been here five years, you get a step. If you got cleep, you get a step. If you got fire certification, you get a step.
We didn't have the information on us.
Well, the pay plan should have been passed then.
Nobody, nobody had the information on the incentives until after we, y'all set the basis.
We asked you.
As far as.
All I'm going to say, if it's secondary, all I'm going to say, if the fire department got there, they did theirs. Well, they are, I think they're going to reclassify them. They're going to get it. It's just, we're voting, it's going to be a higher.
They've been done.
How many people does this affect?
And how many, how many departments does it affect?
I think there were some issues with the fire department. There wasn't there a couple of issues there as well?
No, Nate said he was good and we don't need to disturb anything. Nate said.
Nate said he was fine.
And he said everything was happening. We shouldn't even, don't even mention, they, everybody's happy over there.
Well, what we, what we approved was the pay plan, which is the grid and all the steps.
Right, that's what we did.
But we also had a total that we approved, which has now changed.
It's been an increase.
But that's why we were asking for the total, but nobody could give us the total. So Cassie, how many departments does this kind of affect?
So the only list that we were missing as far as off of what they provided us for their list, the, the only ones we were missing was from the police department as far as who had those things.
So how many people do you think this affects?
I apologize. I know you sent us an email, but I, Kelly, do you remember how many?
Six or seven people.
Okay.
When I was not that, it's, you trust it equal.
If, if I may though, you also have had personnel changes, so your plan's going to be changing. It's a.
It's going to be less. You still have people leaving.
We made the votes to four percent of all the started.
But it, but, but end game is it's going to get fixed and they're going, y'all are going to be positioned correctly to include the incentives.
And we will have.
That's what I'm hearing.
We'll have those numbers by next meeting.
Yes.
And we'll have to vote and approve a new number, correct?
Are we going to be able to have time to verify these numbers? If we're not having an department head meeting until Tuesday more, Thursday morning, council meeting is Thursday evening.
Oh, oh.
Our next one will be.
So I guess that's my question. If the department head meeting is on the eighteenth, we're affecting this to pass on evening of the eighteenth. It's going to be hard for us to do our due diligence.
But it's, if I'm here, maybe to, I'm simplifying it too much, but you would be double checking the six or seven police officers, correct?
But, but there are many, you know, certifications that we, that we've got and have been certifications that the city payable. So, you know, because I can't, I don't know cleep and, uh, my cleep trainings and, and me payable.
But that's what I'm saying, but that's why there was supposed to be a list, the department head, heads were supposed to submit a list based on what they were going to clarify as education. And that's how we were going to increase, um, or give people incentives for these certain things.
Based on the department?
Based on that. And then, and I'm going to use the fire department because I seen his, he showed me, he had a group of things you had to get five. Once you get these five on your own time, then you get a step. You go down and you get the other five or ten, you get another step, but that's.
And that, that was to me, nobody ever, they didn't tell me that they didn't do a list of names or who would qualify for those at the time we submitted that.
But how do we, how do we know to give?
I'm just going by what I was told to do.
But I know that y'all gave up incentives when we passed the pay plan.
The, the biggest incentive right now that, that we need to think about is going to be our investigator on-call incentive. And, uh, because it's a fairly standard that violation for the, uh, us not compensating them for their hours on call. So that, that's one that needs to go regardless. And it'll change, I think, after, you know, it'll, it'll change as we go.
Now, also, we have multiple departments that are on-call status, right? Well, we need to look into those departments as well. You're asking that? If we're not paying.
I know this, we can just keep giving, giving, giving. We're going to be give out.
We're already doing callback.
That's, that's a policy already in place, but.
This is not a callback. This is not a callback. We get paid to call that, a minimum amount to call that. This is a, this is paper restricting the movement of officers or on-call investigator. One investigator per week is on-call seven days.
Okay, well, somebody's going to have to be in charge of all this besides us because we're not here every day just to make sure everything is flowing the way it's supposed to flow. Because this is, this isn't, to me, this isn't good. And I don't want to keep handling business like this and I don't want to be surprised at everything. So somebody will have to be put in charge into what we're asking for and to make sure that we get what we ask for and everything is done correctly and done in the time that it's supposed to be done.
Amen.
Because.
Can you look into handling that?
Well, there you do.
Can I like request?
If they've mentioned at the last meeting, forget about all this education things that the firm has.
Can I like request?
All that, stick with the baseline, do away with the blue line.
But we already did that.
We got the rest of it and it was a launch.
We, we did that. That's exactly what we did and that's why everybody thought they were on the same page. But mayor, this is, this is me. Mayor, I really think, yeah, the mayor needs to be in charge of all this and everything needs to go through the mayor. The mayor needs, it needs to go through the mayor.
I was notified to let H R handle this.
Okay, and then if the mayor.
You don't get notified.
You're the boss. You handle this, man.
But let, and then, and then too, if the mayor gets something same day, if the mayor got something today, we shouldn't get it today. There should be a timeframe in between when he's receiving information. So if he got it in a certain timeframe, he hasn't had time to review, if he's not ready to bring to us, we shouldn't see it. Everything needs to go through him. Nobody should be able to just bring us anything.
But now you were aware of Jane's time being added because you were included on that email to add it to the agenda.
Well, I got your email.
Yeah, it was.
It was the email that I sent you. The mayor was not initially included on it.
Okay.
He didn't see it till the next day.
Okay, well, that's, that's neither here nor there. We, we got Jane taken care of, but moving forward, everything needs to go to the mayor. Nobody should be allowed to bring anything to the work session or put anything on it without, this is, it should be, it should be handled by him.
Thank you.
So.
I have everything waiting for you next.
Can we make sure we have a list of everything we need for him to make sure that we get it at the next meeting? If it's not on the list, we don't need a list in emergency.
Uh, definitely.
Here's the paragraph.
And that's, Alex, did you catch that, Alex? Also, because I know that you have to research information to bring to us as well. So will you work with the mayor on giving that information that we've requested with Jane and everyone?
Cassie.
And Cassie?
Yeah, I have no problem with that, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, as far as the pay plan policy, let it be known that the list has not been provided to the employees that is referenced in the policy pay plan. The letter that went out today? The list of education for everybody to review, the employees, has not been included in the pay plan. That policy letter?
Okay, we get that from you. So, so how does, how does that supposed to go out? Is it up to the department heads to run it out to everybody or is it?
H R referenced it in their policy letter. Um, and I, I did call Cassie and ask her about it because I was being asked and I was told it wasn't actually done yet.
Okay, well, that's okay. What, whatever's happened.
So it'll affect the ten days.
That's the, that's the mayor to handle with that?
Yeah, give the mayor your list. So that can be on the list. But as, um, Alex said, it's going to affect the ten days, so we're going to have to start it up. Maybe we can get that listing out tomorrow, start the ten days tomorrow.
Can I make a statement? As far as the policy itself, that's what requires the ten days. The list is referenced, but it's not something that would be entered in as a policy. So it, it would not have.
But if it's, if it's.
It changes the policy.
It changes the policy by explaining what the policy means. It doesn't make any sense to not have it included in the notification because no one can process the information without.
So, so now, just tell them what we need. Just tell them what we need and what we want, sorry, Cassie. So just, just tell them what we needed. Yeah, just request, tell them what we're requesting and that way we'll get it, and just ask them, just let them know when you want it. I think that's how we should, yeah. And that way, that keeps everybody from being frustrated, there's no going back and forth, we don't care what happened yesterday, we're going to start today, we're going to move forward. And thank you guys.
Thank y'all. Um, is there any other, anybody got anything else they would like to discuss? But, all right, well, I'm going to adjourn this work session at five thirty PM and let's take a five-minute break before we begin the actual council meeting.